Call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Wednesday, November 8th at
7:04.
7:04 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. Number two is approval of the agenda and Elder Person Zajak had requested if we could move eight and nine to be 10 and 11 because he's at the county board meeting tonight and he would like to hopefully be here in time to be part of those discussions. So that is the only change that I had a request to make. So if you all are okay with that, if we could amend the, have a motion to amend the agenda as I presented it.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The amended agenda is approved. Item number three, pledge of allegiance. Linda, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of
Item number four, public comments. Is there anybody signed up for public comments? Did you want to walk down and double check? Gosh, we're only a minute into this. We're moving way too fast. All right. Item number five, approval of the consent agenda. We have multiple common council minutes and budget session and, you know, everything else.
Could we have, those of us that couldn't go to the public safety meeting, could you kind of review the C and just item C?
Would you like that brought down? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
C and D?
There's O D.
Okay. So a motion to approve the consent agenda with item C brought down?
So moved.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, let's go ahead to item C.
So at the Public Safety Committee meeting this evening at 6:30, the Public Safety Committee made a recommendation or I guess moved that there be no changes made to these stop signs on Rogers College and Rogers Agreement and it was, and that there be no further analysis required based on the information presented to the committee.
Thank you. I know that there were people that I had spoken with that wanted to know what the outcome was going to be, so thanks for sharing that.
Yep.
So do we need a motion to approve C then?
Sure, you can do that.
I'll make a motion to approve C.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number six, discussion and action to deny an operator license for Elizabeth A. McEldery.
This item was reviewed as well by the Personnel and Finance Committee, but because denial was recommended by the Personnel and Finance Committee, the council would need to have the final say in that. Ms. McEldery provided an operator license application and upon a background check performed by the Milton Police Department, the background check revealed that she's currently on probation and has a no drink, no bar stipulation on her probation and her probation officer confirmed that it is prohibited, that she's prohibited to work in a bar. Therefore, based on that information, Chief Markwart and the clerk, as well as Personnel and Finance Committee, recommended denial for the request for an operator license for Elizabeth McEldery. If I'm saying that correctly.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Deny the operator license application for Elizabeth McEldery.
I'll second.
And just to be clear on the record then, the basis for the motion in second is the report just given by the city administrator?
That's correct.
Okay.
Everybody clear on the motion in the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2017-20 to increase the levy limit associated with the Milton Joint Fire Department.
This is a resolution that we pretty much do on an annual basis. The state allows municipalities to increase its levy assuming that the requests from a joint fire department, which we have, does not exceed certain thresholds and the increase does not, so we just need approval of this resolution so we, so the council has the option to increase the levy if it's desired.
Did you hear back from the town of Milton?
No.
You did not?
And just to be clear, this is, and I know Dan mentioned it, but this is, this is a resolution that we pass on an annual basis. This has been passed every year that I've been here and probably years prior to me being here. And as Dan pointed out, the resolution is necessary to allow for municipality to increase their levy who is a, who is a part of a joint fire department but does not require you to do so. So by passing this resolution, it would allow us to exceed our levy to cover the fire department, but it wouldn't necessarily predicate that we have to do it. So that's why we are, have been in contact with the town on several occasions to have them pass the resolution as well because it is certainly in our best interest from a financial standpoint that they do so and it's absolutely in their financial best interest that they do so as well, even if they choose not to exceed their levy. There has been tremendous confusion on behalf of the town every year that I've been here about this issue and I think in the past they have reluctantly passed this resolution and this year we are having more difficulty than usual trying to get them to understand why this is necessary for us financially and they too could take advantage of it, but they're, it's, I'll leave it at that.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
2017-20.
There's a motion in the second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we're going to flip now to what used to be item number 10, formerly known as item number 10, but now known as item number eight. Discussion and possible action on a contract renewal with the Humane Society of Southern Wisconsin.
So this was a contract presented by the Humane Society of Southern Wisconsin, which is basically a continuation of services and a continuation of contract fee for a four-year period as opposed to a two-year period. I highlighted the one change in there, which is the, the per day fee for animals that are held past the seven day hold period. I had a question by Elder Person Lane as to, you know, is this, is this, is this fee associated with the cost of doing business, increase in the cost of doing business? Contacted the Humane Society and they indicated yes, that is truly the case. And then they also reminded me that we have never utilized that service. So it's one of those situations where if we were to utilize it, we would, the fee would be $35 as opposed to the 25 that it previously was. But in talking with the Humane Society, they indicated that it would really be at our discretion as to whether we would ever even want them to do so. So we would be able to, we really have complete control over that, or at least the police department does. And the only time that that would come up is if there was an animal held for evidentiary purposes or things of that nature.
Yeah, or if they do a seizure of an animal and, you know, you know, by statute, it's been a long time since I've looked at it, but there's, you know, we can seize an animal for somebody to declare it vicious and then there's proceedings related to that and it might extend beyond that, those seven days. And so there are times where we theoretically could do that, but as was mentioned, we have not since we've had this contract.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, contract the Humane Society of Southern Wisconsin.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and possible action on towing contract for winter snow removal.
Okay, when it's, for the snow season, we do have to tow cars occasionally when we're plowing. We contacted the local auto shops that have the tow vehicles and Jim's was the one that responded to us and they've worked for us in the past and that's pretty much the price they would charge to tow a vehicle. What they do is they charge this to the person that gets towed so the city doesn't have to worry about the money. It goes directly to the person it happens to and then they have to pay them directly. This way we can call one person and we just know who we have to call for the winter.
And, and they're on call, like, so if we know we have a storm coming, they already know where they have to be, starting at the time we're going to start towing, instead of us waiting to that time to call out a wrecker, waiting for them to arrive, call the next one, wait for them. So it's going to streamline our ticketing and towing in snow situations.
These calls are always initiated by officers, correct? The police department generally?
Yeah, I mean, we work, we work in conjunction with DPW on cars that need drove. We don't tow every single car that gets a citation. We tow the ones that need to go and, and work together with them.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve a contract with Jim's Auto for winter snow towing.
I will second.
There's a motion in the second. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Well, we tried. We could do team building first, I guess, but we didn't change, is that a concern if we didn't make that change when we approved the agenda, Mark? I don't want any controversy tonight.
Well, if you want to make sure, you can just do another motion to further amend the agenda.
Anybody up for that?
Make a motion that we move 12 in front of what was eight and nine originally.
Okay.
Second.
Does that work, Mark?
Okay. Can we just?
Because I keep going.
Yeah. There's a motion in the second. Does everybody understand the motion?
There's a motion.
To move number 12 of, to what was nine, three, nine?
General items and all the committee reports, staff reports, and the all favorite team building.
So pushing the two budget-related items behind general items.
Nobody could accuse us of not being flexible. There's a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. So, general items, committee reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first this time. So Historic Preservation, this last weekend, had an event called 50 Years Together. The numbers for that were, we had 54 people in attendance for the event, which surpassed expectations by a fair margin. We had no idea how many people would actually attend, but had great turnout and it was a multitude of ages too, so it wasn't just, you know, one demographic is actually covered by, I'd say a bunch of different ages. There are kids there in attendance as well. We had 20 completed scavenger hunts. 10 of those were 100% right, the other 10 had one issue on them typically. So we ended up giving out three prizes and the prizes were quite spectacular. If you want to hear a listing of all the items, I'm sure Inga probably could recite it off, but I don't have them all memorized, there's so many of them.
But I wonder, do we have donors that donated to the prizes that we could acknowledge?
Want to mention our donors?
Yes, so the sponsors for the event were the Bank of Milton, Milton Area Chamber of Commerce, the Milton House Museum, Milton Historical Society, the City of Milton, of course, we contributed, and then Northleaf Winery. I think that was all of them.
So thank you to all of those sponsors that helped with those prizes.
And also thank you to Inga, Historic Preservation Committee, and Carrie in the Milton House too, for all their hard work on this event.
And we had, we don't have that video that we could show the council tonight, do we?
I have it on my computer.
So yes, we do.
So we could always watch that as part of our team building exercise, because my team building exercise is related to that. So is there anything else with historic preservation?
One other thing I was going to mention about the event.
The prizes were given away.
The three prizes given away. And they had tickets for a bunch of different activities. Basically it was the year of date nights was kind of the theme behind it. So there's a bunch of different tickets to different things. There were books, there were wine, there was a bottle of wine, wine glasses, things like that. There's quite a lot of stuff, as it said, in there. I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports?
I'll give a committee report for the Fire Commission Open House that took place. It was very well attended. There were, the, the fire department, men and women were there, a lot of them, and then we also had some former firefighters that came, so that was very nice. And Chief Baker did an excellent job of running, going over everything and the changes that we're having and it was very nice.
It was a good turnout and it was nice to have the, the previous firefighters attend to, to understand the changes that were being made and to get their perspective. Any other committee reports? Okay, staff reports? Who would like to go first? Howie, okay?
I'm just getting ready for the winter stuff. There's going to be sand down at the garage for sidewalks. The last brush pickup is next week and we're going to keep doing leaves until it snows.
Great. Thank you. So you could effectively do leaves for a really long time, provided it never snows, right?
We could, yeah. If they keep breaking them out, we would.
Okay. Dan?
I guess we'll talk about my stuff when we get to the very last agenda, I know.
Thanks for staying all night with us, Dan.
Glad I could make it too.
Chief?
Next week, hopefully, we'll have our ceremonial swearing in of our new officer, who's now in week two of training and doing very well. So hoping to have him finished up by sometime around the first of the year, hopefully earlier. Jared Fish is, he grew up here in Milton and like he said, he knows where everything is, he just doesn't know the name of the streets. So we're working through that and he's doing really well in training so far, from everything I've been told. Probably don't need to tell you about our case that we had a couple of weeks ago, just kind of want to publicly thank once again the Rock County Sheriff's Office for all of their support that night. Our district attorney, David O'Leary, lots of, of great help and conversation. This was, this was a case that, you know, some people have asked, asked me, do you need more help? Because look at this case. Well, we would never be able to get enough help to do this case by ourselves. I think the sheriff's office had at least a dozen and probably more coming in to help us with this case and that was the only way we could do it. And they were fantastic and just want to go on the record thanking them for that.
I can't remember, so if you've already talked about this, we won't make you go through it again, but how did your accreditation public meeting go? I can't remember if I heard about that or not.
The, the public hearing portion of the accreditation had one attendee, thank you, Larry Lane, for coming. And Larry spoke as a citizen and said some very kind things. I just got notification, actually, just last night, that the board has approved our reaccreditation, the Wiley-Ag Board. I have a couple of things I need to do. It's not a completely for sure thing because that's part of the accreditation process is you learn through the process which things you kind of still need to do a little bit more on and that's not unusual, but I have a couple of things on my to-do list. Those have to be completed by December 11th and then we're good for three years. So that's where we're at on it.
Congratulations. Thank you. Lisa?
Got some exciting changes coming in 2018 for the library. We've been studying the hours where people have been coming in since we reopened in the new facility and Wednesday nights seem to be nights where not a lot of people are coming. So instead of being open until eight, no one's there, we're going to close at six and then use those two hours to stay open later on Thursday and Friday when we have more people there trying to get to the library after work. So we'll be open until six o'clock on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, starting January 2nd. We also will, I think I brought this up too, just to tell you again, joining a new library system on our catalog. Now, instead of seven libraries, we have a full catalog of 28 different libraries' materials to choose from and that also begins about mid-January. And we've been letting all the patrons know as they come in, some changes that they have to make on their library record and it'll be an easy transition with a lot of good benefits with this new software that we'll have, so.
Thanks. Inga, did you want to say anything? We'll have Al do his report and then we'll do our, do the video. If that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, I, I don't have much of a report, but just kind of wanted to give an overview of the referendum yesterday. 1,692 votes were cast in the city of Milton that represented about a 50% turnout and also 115 new voters were registered, so that's exciting as well. You know, I popped in and out periodically throughout the day, but there were other people who were here very, you know, probably before the sun came up and didn't leave until well after the sun went down. And, you know, some of those folks are poll workers, but some of those folks are, are regular employees. You know, folks like Inga and folks like Dan and Chris Kluberthans, you know, stayed, you know, worked long shifts for, for that day and that, that's, that's just, again, just another one of those probably countless examples I can show about the dedication and the good group of people that we have working here. You know, those people that I just listed, many of them are salary. It's, it's not like you got overtime, you know, to, to stick around. They did it because they want to be a part of a team, they want to help out when, when people need help and they realize too that someday they're going to need help. So it's just a good group of people and good turnout at the polls, everything went smooth, smoothly as far as we can tell. We only had to make one phone call today to tell somebody they left their ID behind and, you know, it was a, it was a good day. I didn't hear of any problems in the parking lot. It was busy all day, but people I think are used to the whole system here now, so. So on that note, let's listen to some Elvis.
And thank you, Leanne, for doing a fabulous job. It was her first big election and it was flawless, so thank you to everybody that worked, our volunteers, our city staff, so.
She got out here a little later than she expected.
She was here late, Mark. We can vote. Oh, did you not get your supper?
I was there dining.
Oh, no!
I was here visiting City Hall about 20 up the deck.
Security check.
Okay, that's not covered under the contract.
You're right, he did get supper.
Okay, so I think you all remember when we did our little happy birthday for our 50-year-together anniversary of the merger and Inga did a great job putting together this video and so this, so pay close attention because we're going to be using this in our team building, all right? All right? Woo-hoo! And you can tap your foot or dance if you, if you need to, it's pretty good music, all right?
Happy Birthday, Milton!
Hi, I'm Anissa Welch, the mayor of the City of Milton. We're celebrating the 50th anniversary of the merger of Milton and Milton Junction. I'm standing on what used to be the dividing line between the two communities.
Well, I think that the fact that there were two villages here makes Milton community one of the most, has one of the most unique histories of any community in Southern Wisconsin.
It was kind of silly, you, you know, ride my bike to the other end of town and there'd be a sign on one side that said Milton Junction, on the other side it said Milton. And I was like, hey, the sign now, you know, the towns together.
And I think the people that were on village board at that time and the school board started looking at the financial opportunities that, that two are together would certainly be less expensive. They were paying double trash, double everything.
The big debate before that was which side of the tracks was the wrong side of the tracks to be from. So I lost my team, the west side was the right side of the track.
Dick and I, the two of you.
I think it was still Milton, Milton Junction for quite a while, really after they merged.
I still have trouble saying, you can't stop me from saying. A lot of people still say it, the junction.
I remember it was Bass's, it was a restaurant, it was, this was the town, like where a cat's bar was shot, it was or whatever. And that used to be a big thing to go to after high school and have french fries. And I used to get a huge plate of them and you might go with them with four or five friends and, you know, eat the same thing.
There were these separate identities that were maintained and still are maintained today, but, but now they're one city and I think we move forward in a, in a good combined way.
Thank you for celebrating with us. We can't wait to see what the future holds for the community of Milton.
Happy Birthday, Milton! Happy Birthday, Milton!
Happy Birthday, Milton!
Happy Birthday, Milton!
Happy Birthday, Milton!
Happy Birthday, Milton! Happy Birthday, Milton!
Hooray!
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 Dave, are you ready for team building? Okay, so we've been together for 50 years. What do you think is the biggest change from 50 years ago? And I don't like those faces. I'm looking at that side. That's why I like, was like, hey, watch the video. Or what do you think would surprise Joseph Goodrich the most? So you can, you can choose either of those questions to answer. Don't all raise your hands at once.
I'll go first.
The chief is like, he's ready to go.
Wouldn't the cove surprise him the most? Having the bar on his side of town.
Or Auschwitz or the two wineries or...
Thank you. Anybody else want to go?
Sure.
I think the, I assume, and also people of the generation.
I think that one thing that would surprise Joseph Goodrich is that even at this point in time, we're an educational city. We've got the technical college plus we have our school district.
What is the biggest change in the 50 years?
I'll have to say the library changed from, I believe it was still one room in '66, '67. Until now, we've got, you know, the brand new two-story facility, so. Until now, we've got, you know, the brand-new two-story facility, so.
You're going again?
I'm gonna go again. It's the City Hall. The City Hall used to be, well, the City Hall's not there anymore, that used to be. So, that would be a big change.
I think just looking at the two downtowns over the course of the last 50 years, how much they have changed with some buildings being taken down, or just different facades being put up. I think that that's just interesting to see that development and how it's changed over time.
I think changing from an agricultural society to more of a technological and ergonomical, a variety of areas to provide for the area.
I think you'd be shocked that the Cubs actually won a World Series.
I think you'd be shocked to know that they even existed.
I think he might be surprised that race is still such an issue after all that his family risked. So, I think that might be a surprise.
One of the big changes, at least to me, and I lived here at the time, it was the merger, was the combination of the two administrations and police departments. And I think Mr. Goodrich probably would've been surprised, the relative ease with which it was done.
I know there's a few of you that haven't spoken yet.
Ham spear sign.
I like your original thought there. Thank you for participating. You know we're doing this first, just for you.
I think they'd be, looking back 50 years, the development that's occurred further on this side of town, how that was all finally in 50 years ago. It's a combination now.
You guys can't drag your feet much longer.
Jeremy's here.
If you go back to Joseph Goodrich, the transportation system from horses, and then to trains, and then to what you have now, and the bypass, and just how large the city is.
Well, one of the major changes is there's no Milton College anymore. And that's, it had been here for quite some time, actually, so that was a significant change. I think, I can see the city is still dealing with that.
Did we get everybody?
Who here was, I mean, here, when this change took place? Anybody?
Dave?
Dave was.
Dave, you were?
Yep. You're talking about on planet Earth, or just...
Yeah. I'm pretty sure I wasn't born yet.
And which side of town were you on? Dave? Oh.
Can you hear the tone?
Well, I was on the best, west is best side.
Were you on Madison Avenue?
Yes, I was. Just in Anisa's house.
Yes, I live at Teresa's, the house that she grew up in.
Yes, I do. I was just curious to see who was around.
And I love being on the junction side, I do. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Inga, for doing that video. So, back to, I'm not even sure what number we are on, but we're gonna talk about...
Number four, number eight.
Eight, which is now 11. Discussion, direction, and possible action regarding the 2018 budget, just in case you haven't talked enough budget yet.
So, what we've put on the agenda tonight, obviously, the public hearing is next week, we don't adopt the budget until the 28th of November, but what we put on the agenda tonight is kind of just an update. And I know I've shared a lot of that information with you in my weekly updates, but we thought we'd have a larger discussion here, and potentially get some feedback from the council as we continue to move through the budget process, and get to the point where we're actually preparing a budget for adoption. So, if you harken back to the olden days of October 17th, 2017, that's the last time we got together as a group and discussed the budget. And at that time, we had prepared a preliminary budget, and that budget, as we had put together, had some assumptions built into it. It had an assumption built in on expenditure restraint, it had assumption built into it for health insurance participation. And we won't get into the assessment ratio. So, it had some assumptions built into it. Since that time, we now, those are no longer assumptions. We have the actual numbers from the state. So, if you recall, we had projected, or predicted, or plugged in a number for expenditure restraint of 1.9%. And based on that number, at the time the budget was presented on October 17th, if that number were to have come true, we would've needed to cut about $9,000 from the budget in order to meet expenditure restraint. Well, since that time, we've gotten the expenditure restraint number from the state, and it's much higher than what we expected it to be. Instead of being 1.9, it actually came in at 3, which is considerably higher. So, again, just as kind of a brief reminder, what is expenditure restraint? Expenditure restraint is the amount the state allows a city to increase their expenses. So, not a levy limit, but an expenditure restraint. So, at the time that we talked on October 17th, we had talked about, we're gonna have to cut $9,000. There were some discussions about where would that $9,000 come from. Well, based on the information from the state, as we sit here today, we wouldn't have to cut anything. We could adopt that budget as presented on the 17th, and it'd just go on our merry way. We wouldn't have to cut anything, and we'd meet expenditure restraint, we'd meet levy limits. But that doesn't mean that we have to do that. If there's still items that the council wants to cut from the budget, if there's still areas that they'd like to see funds get shifted around, that is 100% still absolutely on the table. The other option that is available now to the council, and this is the first time that it's been available to the council since I've been here, is the budget that was presented on the 17th, we actually have the ability to increase that budget, based on this new expenditure restraint figure. So, again, if the council wanted to adopt the budget as presented on the 17th, fully fund the nonprofits, and go on our merry way, we could, and we would be leaving about $30,000 on the table, that we could levy. The first time since I've been here where we have an option where we could say, okay, actually, we can increase our levy by about $30,000, still meet expenditure restraint, still meet our levy limit, and look to potentially fund some other initiative, fund some additional capital, fund some additional program. So, that's kind of where we're at today. Certainly, don't anticipate anybody to make a decision, certainly don't need anybody to make a decision. But we wanted to present that information to you this evening, so as we start to get into the budget public hearing next week, and then we actually go look to adopt the budget on the 28th, if we had some sense, I guess, from the council, did you want, you know, are we looking to levy to the max? Are we looking to adopt the budget that was presented on the 17th? It would be helpful for us, so we can kind of prepare what that would look like. We can certainly make those changes right then and there on the spot on the 28th, there's nothing that says we can't. But I guess the more information you provide to us, the better we can prepare ourselves and prepare the council to make those decisions, and know what those implications will be in terms of a tax rate, and a levy, and things of that nature. So, I'll say just a couple more things, and then I'll stop, and we can ask questions and talk. As we outlined on the memo here, the top box, so on page one of the memo, the box number one, that is the exact budget that was presented on October 17th, with the nonprofits fully funded. So, that's exactly what you saw on October 17th, with the nonprofits fully funded.
And adjustments for health insurance.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? In the actual box on the memo, it says 2017, and then 2016, is that supposed to be 18?
No, because we're talking about the levy here, so it's the 2017 levy and 2016 levy.
Makes sense.
For comparison purposes.
Yes. So, you could look at it as the 17 budget, 18 budget.
Right. So, that's what was shown on October 17th. If we were to levy to the max, the next box is what would it show? So, ultimately, if you really wanna cut to the chase, if we were to adopt the budget that was presented on October 17th with the nonprofits fully funded, the tax rate would be $10.01. If we were to levy to the max, the tax rate would be $10.10. So, we're talking about a difference in the city's tax rate of nine cents, and that's about $30,000, it changed there. So, I just wanted to provide that information, so folks can say, okay, well, what are we talking about here? What does $30,000 do to the tax rate? What does that mean on my tax bill? That's what it means.
Or $9 for every $100,000. $9 for every $100,000.
But it doesn't have any positive or negative effect on spending in the future?
On 2019?
Sustain that increase if we use it?
I think, maybe, do you mean, can we carry that over?
No, I mean, if we take the increase this year, does that benefit the opportunity to now use that increase in future years, once you increase it?
Yes. Yeah, in short, if I understand the question correctly, if we do not levy to the max, and we didn't levy to the max last year, and we didn't levy to the max the year before, because we couldn't. So, you know, so last year...
Because expenditure restraint was kind of the ceiling. So, this year, we're talking about the levy limit being the maximum ceiling, so it's two different numbers that are dictating the ceiling.
So, last year, we left about $70,000 on the table, and we were only able to utilize about $47,000 of that this year. So, I think, so I think to kind of get to the root of your question, if we are to leave this $30,000 on the table, we would not be able to use it, utilize it next year. We'd be able to utilize some portion of it, but probably only about 40% of it.
But if you take it all now, you can get it next year?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a benefit to us to use it?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Unless there's some situation in which our overall equalized value decreases dramatically, because that would decrease the levy limit.
I would tend to lean towards, right now at least, but I'm open to more discussion, but I would tend to lean towards going to the maximum on the levy, and having some system in place to decide, as we move forward into the budget year, where we could utilize any surplus, I shouldn't say surplus, contingency or unexpended funds, that I think that would make sense to me, so.
And that's kind of what I was thinking, too, to go with the max, because I would actually like to see some money go back into the contingency fund, so that we have it if we need it, and still fund the nonprofits. That way, when we have situations that we need to come up with the money at the last minute, at least we know that we can, we'll still have that money to fall back on. I'm not ready to decide how to spend it, I'm just deciding that we should, at this time, look at maintaining the use of the money, because it will benefit the city in having that access to the money, and in case we need it, not just to spend it to spend it. And then, because there have been a number of needs, then we have it to utilize. But, obviously, there are other people that have other thoughts to it, so I'd like to hear from other people, too.
I would agree, we should go for the max availability, but we're kind of talking like this is a complete deal here, and we're just gonna have this money, have to decide how to do it, we gotta look at something else here, and overlook, we've got nine items that did not make the budget for a total of $209,196. We need to get our heads out of the dark here, and figure out how we're gonna address some of these items. Last year, we left, I think it was $130-some thousand worth of capital requests unfilled, so, and some of them could've been filled, but we cut a deal to send money to nonprofits. And we're making a big mistake here to not fund as many of these items as we possibly can, and we need to prioritize them. From what I heard earlier today, the snowplow is the number-one priority on the list, and it might not be true, but that's what I heard. But anyways, addressing as many of these as we can, to do not to do so is irresponsible. You're gonna have to deal with these sooner or later, and the longer you wait, the more chances there are of some of this equipment that's gonna be replaced, breaking down, costing us more money, and the equipment that's on this list is gonna get more expensive every year. And you're not giving the folks that live in this community everything for their dollar, if you're not funding the total request of city government first, before you worry about anything else. So, like...
I also think we should go towards this additional $30,000, because we do have a lot of capital expenses, as Dave mentioned, we also have additional road improvements we wanna do, additional sidewalk improvements we wanna do, need to increase contingency. Been working on relatively bare-bones budget previous years, to some extent, or actually to a lot of extents, so I think it's a good chance to actually take care of some of the backlog of expenditures we still have out there that we're pushing off for any day.
Anyone else wanna comment?
I don't think I, I'm totally convinced that we should go to the levy, to the max, but if we did, and it's definitely something to think about, I think we should, I would wanna know where the money would be going, or what we'd be planning on it. All the things we talked about here, the capital requests, the requests, and they're, everybody doesn't necessarily always get what they want, and I know we always go get what we need, but I'd like to see us, I know we used to have a capital account, and I know you can look at it that way, if it's in contingency, you can use it for the type of projects Ryan mentioned, or Dave, but I think it'd be nice if the city had that kind of line item to look at towards the future.
I think what you're saying, like a capital replacement fund, that we would attempt to fund every year, and then you would purchase capital outside, out of that fund, on an annual basis?
I'm not particular on how exactly it would work, but if we're putting money in contingency, and then possibly using it in that manner anyway, if we're basically, would have a second savings, I don't know, I don't know that you would, how you would do it, I'd leave that up to you.
And just so folks know, if you remember back on October 17th, when we presented the budget, the budget that we presented actually called for a reduction of contingency by $44,000. So, that's how we were even, we had already proposed to reduce contingency by $44,000 when we presented the budget on the 17th of October, which really did bring our contingency down to a very, very small number. which really did bring our contingency down to a very, very small number.
Thirty thousand dollars of contingency.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, so, yeah, exactly. We were able to spend a portion of contingency this year to, to finalize the Bowers Lake Road project, yeah.
And that's important, and that's why I don't want that contingency fund to disappear either. I mean, if we, if we put our, if I throw all my, all my eggs in one basket and commit as of January one to a series of capital expenditures, I don't want to have that pot empty.
Believe the capital expenditure account, um, it can be manipulated, not ma, in, in a way, didn't we have an exp, a capital account before?
We did up until two thousand and fourteen.
And what was that used for?
Uh, where, where did the money go in two thousand and fourteen?
Where did the, there's no longer a capital account, right?
No.
Okay, so where, where did the money go?
This building.
So it was a capital expenditure?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. But it was used to, you, the ca, it paid for this bill, a portion of this building in cash.
So you could restart a capital fund? Is that what you're saying?
It was like a, an equipment replacement fund for rolling stock for some of those larger, more expensive pieces of equipment. With the idea being that when you have to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on larger pieces of equipment, whether it's fire equipment or DPW equipment, you kind of normalize that cost out so you don't have to borrow for it. You've kind of got a pot of money to either put a substantial down payment or to purchase it outright with cash.
So I think everybody's points are very valid and worth considering. What I was thinking about, and I know it's not much. I know nine dollars difference really isn't a lot. But I was thinking what we've asked of our community over the past year, and, um, we've asked, I think, a lot of them. We asked for a wheel tax. Uh, I think our utility bills went up. And just because we can, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that we should. Not because it's an extraordinary amount and it's just, I just want to be mindful. I want, I want the community to know that we're being really thoughtful with their dollars, every last one of them. And I agree, we need to have a contingency fund. I, I agree with our capital expenses. You all know I'm in favor of giving some money to our nonprofits too. So it's nice that we don't have to make this decision tonight and that we have some time to think about all of that. What I would prefer though is if we do come closer to a decision on this before the public hearing. I would feel badly, I guess, if we went to public hearing with one budget and, and then we changed it after the public hearing and not really giving people, um, an opportunity to talk about it. So, um, those are my thoughts.
Right. Honorable Mayor, I agree with you on, on some of what you said, but I do think it's important for us to be realistic with the community. And these are, I agree with Dave's comment, Alderman Dave earlier. Putting things off isn't necessarily gonna deliver good news next year either. We've, we've got some things that do have to be done, and I would argue that the wheel tax speaks for itself. Those, those three roads were done. Uh, it didn't cost extra to the taxpayer other than what they contributed already in the wheel tax. And we're gonna see continued results from that. And I, I feel uncomfortable just saying, well, we'll, to quote a, a recent thing, we'll worry about that when it happens, um, unquote. Being a little political there, I apologize, but, uh, my point is I'm uncomfortable with we'll worry about that when it happens. I'd rather do something now and, and have people understand and show exactly what we're gonna do with that money at some point. Like, like Alderman C. Jack said, so.
And I believe full, you know, wholeheartedly in investing in our roads and, and I believe that we are doing a very good job in investing the taxpayers' dollars and, and the services that we, we are receiving. I just wanted to share some of my thoughts when we were talking about this.
Here's maybe a, an, an option, and Dan and I haven't discussed this. When we have the budget public hearing next week, it, it was always my intention to give a presentation before that. I think it's helpful just to kind of, for the council to revisit it. It's helpful for me to revisit it. And it's helpful for those who may be in the audience to kind of see that before, you know, maybe to help better prepare their comments. We could present, we could present two budgets. You know, I mean, we, we're really only talking about thirty thousand dollar difference. And, and we could, we could say, here's, here's the budget, here's budget A, here's budget not to the max, and here's budget to the max, and this is the tax rate. And this is where, um, you know, this is where those dollars would likely go to a contingency or a capital acquisition or, uh, infrastructure improvements. It's, it's likely gonna go to one of those three things. It's not gonna go to staff. You know, like, so people, people can feel comfortable with that. It's not gonna, it's not gonna get returned as bonuses or raises or anything like that. We didn't even discuss that as an option on staff, if, if, unless the council's really willing to do it. But, you know, so we could, I mean, I could, we could do that for next week Tuesday. That way, the, the folks who are here in the audience can say, okay, here's the decision that the council has passed. And, and, and then we can talk about it. We, we can put, yes, the budget public hearing is on the agenda, but we can certainly have an item on the agenda after the budget public hearing that says discussion, direction, and possible action on the twenty eighteen budget, where you could provide additional direction to, to us. So when we come on the twenty-eighth, we've got a budget.
I think that's a really great idea, and the sooner that you could get those two budgets up on the city website too, even if you can.
Probably tomorrow. Because what, what we'll do is we'll put together that same packet that was provided on the seventeenth, except well, for some of those pages where specifically it's talking about tax rates and other things like that, there'll just be two pages, one with budget A, one with budget B. And the other thing that hopefully if the county budget passes next week Tuesday without too many alterations, I've talked to the finance director there and she said, um, by late afternoon, she'll be able to actually give me, um, what the city of Milton's apportionment is. So be able to actually really hone in on what the overall tax rate will be too.
I think that would be very helpful.
The only missing piece will be the school credit, which has a very, very minute impact on things. So we'll be able to come within probably ten cents of what the final tax bill will look like for everyone that lives in, in the city of Milton.
Well, and I think that's important. That's the piece that the public's gonna want to know. You know, what I have on my hundred thousand, what is it gonna be? Budget A, budget B. So they know, you know.
Yeah, well, we know today, and that number's not gonna change, that, that, that from the city's portion, that's gonna be nine cents. What we, and that won't change, that, that won't change irrespective of what happens at the county budget. The, the last piece that we'll need to know is when somebody gets their tax bill, you know, for the most part, they don't care what the city's portion, the school district's portion, they, they just want to know what's that bottom line. We won't have that bottom line until the county passes their budget. Um, so.
That won't be included in your packet because that probably won't have that till four o'clock on Tuesday, but we'll be able to have that. And we'll probably be able to update that PowerPoint presentation anyway, so that'll be.
Does that, I mean, is everybody o, okay with that approach? But again, I, I, I don't want people to feel pressure that they have to make a decision. I, 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 I want, and I want, I want people to, for me, I know how, how, how I would want a process is, okay, give, give me, give me everything now, one more time so I can see how it all fits in. And I think we can do that next week Tuesday.
I also would like to see us be open about, if we can at that public hearing, about some of these capital expenditures that we're gonna have to face at some point, regardless of whether we can do it in the budget or not do it in the budget. I mean, that, um, in fact, maybe need to, in fact, consider some borrowing, I dare I say that word, but.
Take it back right now.
Okay, well, I mean, if, if there's some needs that need to happen, that's important. Make it that up to the community.
And to, to, um, all the person laying's point, you know, our goal has always been every year to not borrow, but at some point, necessity will prevail and we will have to borrow at some point, you know. And I'm, I'm hoping it's not for a while longer. Or if it is, it's, it's a short-term turnaround to get a piece of equipment and then pay it back. But as far as like long-term borrowing, I think we're still a long ways away from that. As long as you'll have me here.
So then.
Emmy.
So then for, for our next week's meeting, then will you also, um, show us what you would do with the items that have been discussed? Whether or not we put that money into contingency or what specific capital projects or what type of a schedule of capitals? Because, and the reason that I'm asking that is because I'm just thinking about what we do with our police cars, where we, we're automatically budgeting for one and a half police cars. So is that kind of what you're gonna do with like the public work stuff and?
Short answer is yes. What, what we will put, what we'll bring forward, and, and we'll need to talk about this as staff tomorrow a little bit, what we'll bring forward is if you would like to fund capital, this is what, this is what we would recommend you fund. If you would like to create a, a, uh, capital replacement fund, this is how we would do it. If you would like to put that money in contingency, this is, this is what it would look like. So those, that's how, probably how we would lay it out. In terms of, in terms of just a, a systematic capital replacement, there's really nothing like the police cars. They're, they're the same thing over and over and over. We have multiple of them. If you go out to DPW, they have, they have many different pieces of equipment and, and none of them are, well, there's, I, I shouldn't say none of them are the same, but each one's a little bit different. It's, it's, you know, if we were in a larger community and we had a vehicle operating maintenance fund or something like that, and they, and they would buy, you know, five pickup trucks a year, that would make sense, but we're, we're too small in the sense that we wouldn't be able to be that prescriptive with anything other than police cars. So to, to go, I guess, to take a step further back or dig a little deeper into your, into your question, I think. An overall capital replacement, a CIP, or capital improvement program, an overall CIP? Yes, that's absolutely something that, that we should do at the city, but if, if our intention is not to borrow, then having a CIP is a little bit of an exercise in futility simply because we're, we're purchasing capital on a cash basis, on a year-to-year basis. So the CIP would really be almost a year-to-year look as opposed to like a five-year or a ten-year look. I would say, you know, maybe five years from now, a full-blown ten-year CIP would make sense when we know that we have the capacity to make larger scale purchases, like a fire truck or, uh, you know, a large piece of, uh, a large piece of equipment for DPW. I mean, I'm sure one of their largest piece of equipment is probably a hundred and sixty thousand. I, I don't know, do you, do you have anything mu, bigger than that? What, what would be bigger than that? Oh, okay, okay. I said a hundred and sixty. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So I probably gave you more than what you asked for, but.
Okay, so we're good, um, to move on to the next item? Okay.
Yep, I, I understand the direction.
All right.
Parallel budgets with two different options so you can see the, the various pros and cons.
Okay. Final item, uh, discussion, direction, and possible action regarding nonprofit funding. And we talked about this, I think primarily in terms of maybe the next budget, but wanted to get a start on it. Is that right, Larry?
I think, I hope all of you had a chance to read my memo, I guess, and I just want to be clear, what I'm recommending is that, I've laid out a scenario here, but it doesn't have to be this scenario. My, my point is I think it would be good if we would, as a council, at some point before the, the next year, we would, uh, approve a recommendation or a resolution to develop a policy for nonprofit funding within our city budgets. And that might be, A, we don't do it at all, B, this is how we do it, or C, we do a combination. I'm, I'm not proposing, I know all the answers. I'm just giving you enough information here to say, I think the current process is uncomfortable for me. And I think it creates stress and anxiety in the community. Because it's come to the table and then we'll think about it. I'd rather have some process in place, if you will, that everybody knows is followed. It's clear about how you apply, when you apply, and it keeps the city in management of their own budget, meaning one year we may not have any money for nonprofits, but just based on the way our budget rolls out. But another year, we may have some money. I'm a big believer in that. I'm also a believer in, um, nonprofits not necessarily relying on a certain amount of money every year to come from a source. Uh, things change, donors change, the community changes, and it's really not, the city's responsibility to ensure the viability of a nonprofit organization. That's just my opinion.
So I'm wondering if, at some point, because you all love ad hoc committees so much, we could do an ad hoc committee. It could be a combination of a couple of council members, maybe, maybe someone from a nonprofit, maybe some community members, and, uh, we could look at how other communities do this, whether they do it or not, maybe how the, you know, the county does it. I know it's a much bigger pot of money, but, um, I think, I think I would like, you know, there to be a community partnership in developing this policy. I, you know, curious as to what y'all think about. Yes, Dave?
I, uh, I kind of like where Larry was going there, but I hesitate to institutionalize a process of, of how we, uh, hand out money every year to nonprofits. Very hit around the head. We may not have money one, some year, like this year. We don't have money to give away this year. We're not carrying, or we're not covering the items that need funding now. And to put out some policy out there, our committee, that's gonna decide, well, who, who are we gonna give money to this year and who aren't we? This, uh, this idea that the city has some responsibility to fund these nonprofits is ridiculous. Our only responsibility with funding is to fund government processes and purchases, period.
And I respect, um, your perspective on that. Um, I think many people in the community, or some, maybe not many, might have a different perspective, and that's why I would encourage some community involvement. Maybe, maybe this committee would decide exactly that, Dave, that the recommendation is we just, this isn't even part of the budget process. So, and, and that's really up to the council to decide that you don't have to have an ad hoc committee. You can make a resolution that, you know, you don't fund anything nonprofit. Certainly, that's, that's a decision that the council could make. I think, um, Larry was just looking for some direction and what everybody's thoughts were on, on doing something about this, and certainly a decision doesn't have to be made tonight. Maybe, um, we would take action on it in January, but just to give everybody some, some time to think about it. Is that what you're thinking about?
Kind of. I, I was just saying, probably putting it back on your honors agenda, if you will, and you work with the city staff and, and appoint some sort of a blue ribbon or ad hoc committee for that. One, I do want to address for Dave, I did make a real good point. I, I really want that to be really part of the process. Of everything that I wrote down, this is the one that I think needs to be in the process somewhere, and that's number five. That said, policy include language that the total grant funding may be altered or eliminated during an annual budget process. That said, policy include language that the total grant funding may be altered or eliminated during an annual budget process in order to meet needed city services and/or to create a balanced budget. Meaning that, that's got to be a piece of the puzzle, that, any policy that we, you would implement, I would like that definitely to be included, so.
I, I agree with you.
Um, I would just, I would just like to make the suggestion that we go with the ad hoc committee on this. Um, and, um, and Dave, I think you and, you, you pretty much know that I, I am very much in support of, of our nonprofits and the quality of life that it brings into our city for our residents, and that being a very important part of why these, we have people here that we do. But I, I just feel like that way we can do some research, we can find out what other communities are doing, we can, we can do a really good look into this. Um, there, this, um, funding, um, I'm not going to say nonprofits altogether, but I will tell you that, um, at the municipal conference, that was a question that I raised. And, um, there are communities out there that do, in fact, support their senior centers. They consider it to be a very, um, vital part of their community. Um, it's a, it, it's definitely a growing population, and, um, then, you know, but these communities, I heard all kinds of different, different ways that they take care of these. You know, there were those that rely solely on fundraising, there are those that have a percentage that they receive from the city. There are those that work with other nonprofits, but I'm getting a funny look from Mark, so I feel like I maybe shouldn't go too far into this.
I would say that, with the Lake Conference, I did talk to a couple of people from different commis- municipalities, and some of them do, do a committee of sorts to figure out, um, what to, to spend on nonprofits. But typically those that have committees typically have a budget already allocated for, uh, nonprofits, and it's their determination as to who gets what pot of money. Um, I'd also say that ultimately, like the rest of our committees, if we were to have a committee that looked at each nonprofit, it's still going to come back to the council for us to still make a decision. One way or the other, whether it would be presentations from nonprofits, they're still going to come back to us for us to make the decision. So it's a matter of if you want a committee telling you what you should figure out for the budget, or if we should figure that out as a group here, is kind of something to mention there as well. Um, let's see here. The only other thing I wanted to point out was, I was reading the comprehensive plan today, because I had a day off. And one of the things mentioned on there was that, one of our, one of our City of Milton overall goals, number three, is protect valuable historic resources that contribute to our unique character. I just want to leave it off at that.
So do you, um, do you want to have a motion tonight to create an ad hoc committee? Do you want to put this on another agenda? What is the council's wishes?
I would kind of like to just put this on another agenda once we get through this year's budget, so that we can just really take some time and look into it.
But I don't think, I don't want, I don't want the council to be doing the work of this blue ribbon committee. So I would move, in, in deference to you, I would move that we, um, establish a committee and assign the work to them.
Is that a motion? So your motion is to establish, uh...
An ad hoc committee, um, and I'll be real specific if that's all right, and we can change that. Uh, an ad hoc committee consisting of a, at least one alderperson, at least one, um, individual representing a nonprofit in the community, and a, a city staff member. That would be my motion.
Could have more, you just minimally want that, and probably a couple other community.
Sure.
There's a motion? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Uh, does anybody have any questions on the motion?
I mean, are you giving... So you haven't set a timeline?
No, I did it. I did in my memo, right. I would like to see something go back to council by February, so we could, so we could, uh, to the community or whatever if we need to, so.
Okay. Okay. Um, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oh, wait, Jeremy?
So the ad hoc committee is basically just going to put together some data to bring back to council?
And recommend it.
I suppose I wouldn't, I'm not objecting to the idea, I just, I'm comfortable with the system as it is, and, and facing, and hitting, and talking about them head-on, you know, in, in the community like this, but I wouldn't mind. Hearing what the committee came up with, want to make sure we weren't binding anything.
This ad hoc committee is strictly that. You, the council still has a say on what we do or don't do, I mean...
But then there's really only three nonprofits groups, four.
There's plenty of nonprofits, we don't have to include the ones that actually...
Right, I would just, I think...
Would we do all of, all of the nonprofits?
No, we're just...
I mean, how do you differentiate?
I mean, we have a certain, a certain number of nonprofits that typically request...
Right.
So... Right, but it doesn't, it's not like there's only three nonprofits, it could be...
There's a lot of churches, there's all kinds of groups in the community.
We wouldn't be able to make donations to religious organizations anyway.
Well, here we go. If, if I decided to start a counseling agency, a community counseling agency supported by my congregation, but I'm serving the community, I would certainly feel comfortable coming to the council and saying, I'd like some money to help run that. My point is, it doesn't, they, they do all kinds of community work, uh, Milton Food Pantry's another example. There's all kinds of groups out there, so we don't have to get them all on this committee, but, but I feel like the current process kind of scares some of these people off, because maybe they don't need ten thousand dollars, maybe they only need five hundred dollars to do a service.
Anything else?
I wasn't responding to you, sorry.
All those, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor for this ad hoc committee, uh, as described by, uh, the motion maker? Say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
The motion carries, so that's our, one of our two thousand and eighteen goals to get done. All right, um, the only thing that we haven't changed is number thirteen and fourteen. Um, our next meeting is, uh, next week, Tuesday, November fourteenth, uh, at...
Six.
Sorry, don't make glasses on. At six P. M., and it's a Budget Public Hearing.
Yeah, so please, folks, remember that it's at six next week, Tuesday, instead of seven. And there, it is the Budget Public Hearing, but we will likely have another item on there, but maybe not.
Oh, don't be too cryptic.
Yes, yeah. We're going to have one other item on there, provided I don't forget it. Yeah, yeah.
All righty, um, I'd remember fourteen, a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank...